Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 28, 2016 legislative session. At this time, I ask you to, if you have electronic devices, to please silence them. Should you need to take a call, please exit the chamber and take it in the hall. If you, if there's an emergency during this meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, go down the stairs. If that exit for some reason is blocked, make a left and a right and go down the stairs. Should you need any assistance, we'll be glad to provide it for you, just ask. Now, I'd like to call Reverend Norman Hancock of St. Thomas Anglican Church to the podium for the invitation. Reverend Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many and abundant blessings that you have bestowed unto each and every one of us. We thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. And we thank you for all those willing to serve on behalf of our Salisbury community. We come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support for this city council as we begin this meeting. Help all here tonight to engage in meaningful discussion, allowing us to grow closer as a group, all the while encouraging the bonds of community. We also lift up to you this evening all those to be placed in a position of guidance for our youth, especially the Salisbury Youth Civics Council, the Youth Development Advisory Committee, and Salisbury University. Grant them discernment, knowledge, and a willing heart for the work that will be set before them. We pray for those also involved in the United Way, for their outreach within our neighborhoods. May you assist them with the resources they need to help improve the health and well-being of our community. We pray also for those men and women serving in our police and fire departments. Grant them strength and courage in their daily assignments and protect them from all harm. May the efforts of all here this evening be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom as we seek to serve with respect for all. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Hancock. Please rise now and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Hancock. This is a very exciting, these are some of the good times that we have, and it's enjoyable to have the Salisbury Youth Civics Council swearing in ceremony tonight in our chambers. So I'm going to ask Circuit Court Clerk Mark Bowen to come up, and if all of the youth council members will stand, please.
All right. I am going to administer the oath to all of you at the same time, so if each of you will raise your right hands and repeat after me together. I, and state your name.
I, John.
Agree that I will.
Agree that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
As a member of.
As a member of.
The Salisbury Youth Civics Council.
The Salisbury Youth Civics Council.
According to guidelines established.
According to guidelines established.
By the Salisbury City Council.
By the Salisbury City Council.
Congratulations to each of you.
We are going to take a photo, and what I would ask you to do is come, we're going to scoot together, and if you guys would come up behind us, we'll get a picture of the whole, of all of you.
Want to move this way a little?
You're one of the kids. We'll get in the middle. Thank you very much. I think we, youth deserves another round of applause for their volunteering.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Could I ask Kendall, the program coordinator, to come up and say a few words about the program?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Kendall Crock, and I'm the proud program coordinator for the Salisbury Youth Civics Council this year. I have already had the privilege to meet and work with these 13 elite individuals for just a month, and I am incredibly impressed with all of their ideas. The Salisbury Youth Civics Council is intended to give youth grades nine through 12 a strong voice in local affairs. Our goal is to empower youth to act in their local communities through civic engagement. Council members will present research proposals to the city and county councils. This year, we have many exciting things on the schedule. I'll be personally ensuring the growth of their passions by pushing to get their proposals met. We will be working with outstanding leaders of our community that will further assist our progress. I'm so excited to get to work with these amazing new and returning members and look forward to a great council year. Now, I would like to introduce one of our third-year members, Adit Abraham, who is going to share about his experiences and goals for the year.
Now, I hate to be that guy that seems to have a doomsday-like outlook on everything, but the fact is, we live in a very divided time. In our country right now, there's division across races, there's division across genders, there's division across religions, and there's division across age groups. And it's because of all this division that I really feel like the importance of the Youth Civics Council cannot be overstated. The Youth Civics Council acts as a bridge between two groups that often don't have good communication between them. It bridges the gap between these brilliant youth and our city's leaders. It bridges the gap between having ideas for a better society and actually making them a reality. At the same time, it empowers our youth to be more involved in the community. It opens our eyes to issues we may not have even considered, and most importantly, it prepares us to one day be leaders of this great nation. But the success of this council relies on more than just the youth. And so, on behalf of the council, I'd like to thank the parents, who always take the time out to drive their kids to meetings. I'm sure getting up on Saturday mornings just to drive your kids isn't your favorite activity of the week, but I'd also like to thank Kendall for always going above and beyond to make sure our activities are a success. And I'd like to thank the city leaders and officials for listening to us and supporting us as we pursue our common goal of making Salisbury a better place for all of us. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Kendall, for all you do. I'd like to see this in the newspaper tomorrow. Some good news, some good news. Excellent example of what our youth are all about. We look forward to working with you all. Now, we have a presentation from Mr. Robbie Sheehan of the Youth Development Advisory Committee. He's the chair, and he has a presentation, and hopefully, I am the remote control tonight, so you can blame me.
Thanks, Jack.
I didn't do anything.
The little icon. I can present without it if you need me to. Awesome. Yay, Chris. All right.
Well, that was easy.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, City Administrator Glanz. Mayor, I think you can just call off the search. I think you've got your best candidate right here. Salisbury University educated, doesn't get much better than that. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Robbie Sheehan. I serve as a chair and, to my surprise, secretary, thank you, Mr. Mayor, of the Youth Development Advisory Committee, and very honored to serve in this role. I was voluntold to serve in this role, but honestly, it is a great honor. Mentoring is something that I know was important for me in my life. I wouldn't be where I am today without the investment of my youth pastor when I was a young man. So I'm very excited to be able to serve in this role and to help make some, some good things happen. So I appreciate the leadership of the city, the mayor, for pulling this together. We've had some really great conversations, and I'm excited to talk about them tonight. I don't know who scheduled me after Adit, but that was really impressive, and he's actually come out to a couple of our meetings, so we're just really excited about the collaboration that's happening, happening between the adults and the young people. It's really great to see. So what is our vision? What is the vision for the Youth Development Advisory Committee? We imagine a city where every young person has the resources, love, support, and educational opportunities that they need to develop their passions and interests so that they can achieve their fullest potential. We believe in a city that it has a community of people who are dedicated to helping youth thrive in every aspect of life, a city where every young person has an adult that cares about and for them, and has a network of peers that encourage and support them. That's the Salisbury that we see, and that is the Salisbury we're working to become. We are Salisbury University, Salisbury University, Salisbury's Youth Development Committee. So I appreciate the leadership again of the city and the mayor for the foresight in making this happen. Slide, awesome, great. So just an overview, as you guys are well aware, this committee was established by the mayor and the city council in response to, in response to the recent rise in juvenile crime. If you look at the founding legislation for our committee, reports that during the first quarter of 2016, while there's a 16 percent decline in arrests, there was a corresponding 13 percent increase in juvenile arrests during that same time period. The charge, again, found in that legislation is that we would advise the mayor on creating more opportunities for young people to be successful, make recommendations on the development of community centers, and provide policy guidance. So originally, there were 23 committee members appointed, and, and now we have over 80 active members. I don't think all of them came before this body for approval, so hopefully, we're okay on that point. But it's just been astounding, the passion the community has for youth. And clearly, you guys hit a nerve in establishing this committee. So we have representation from the city, the state, the county, the city, governments, businesses, civic organizations, faith community, and public school system, and even young students. This is our mission statement that we crafted. The Youth Development Advisory Committee advises the mayor and the city council by developing policy and programmatic recommendations to ensure that all youth within the city of Salisbury receive the support that they need to thrive in every aspect of life. This includes, but is not limited to, their social, mental, physical, emotional, and spiritual health. The White Act will collaboratively develop annual goals and strategies that work to address chronic issues related to youth development within our community and promote sustainable solutions that will even help young people achieve their fullest potential. That's a mouthful. Mr. President? Slide. Thanks. So what the heck are we doing? We've got 80 people on this committee. What the heck are we doing? Eighty people is a lot. So trying to manage the conversation has been a challenge. So we've divided ourselves into four different subcommittees: College, Career, and Life Readiness; Mental and Emotional Wellness; Physical and Creative Development; and Public and Youth Safety. So I'll just go over the charge for each of our subcommittees and the conversations that we've had in each of them. We've been meeting since June 30, I think was actually our first meeting, and, and we've met several times, and the subcommittees have met multiple times since then. So the College, Career, and Life Readiness Subcommittee focuses on K through 16 education, so that's public school, through college. After-school programming, career readiness, workforce development, and life skills development; drivers' education, financial literacy, and home economics. Emotional and Mental Wellness Subcommittee focuses on substance abuse, abuse issues, mental health, emotional fitness, and mentoring initiatives specifically. The Physical and Creative Development Subcommittee focuses on athletics, recreational activities, creative extracurricular offerings, childhood hunger, and sustainable food development. That's a community gardens conversation we've been having in there as well. And last, Public and Youth Safety Subcommittee, which focuses on strategies against youth crime, loitering laws, establishing a drop-in reporting center, and school-based discipline. So I have to give a huge shout-out to our subcommittee chairs. Mr. Mike Dunn chairs our Public and Youth Safety Subcommittee. He's doing a great job, and we're having conversations with community leaders, university president, Dr. Janet Ely Ashbach, and the mayor hosted a conversation not too long ago. So this subcommittee is focusing on the follow-up to that conversation. We have Kim Gillis and Jamie Hayes, who are leading our College, Career, and Life Readiness Subcommittee. Dr. Sam Scott and Mark Thompson are heading up our Mental and Emotional Wellness Subcommittee. And then we have Amber Green and Andy Kitro handing up our, heading up our Physical and Creative, Creative Development Subcommittee. So we've got a lot of rock stars on board, and it's, it's been pretty great to see. So really, what are we doing? So first things first, the thing that we called for in our first meeting was a program assessment, trying to understand what is out there for youth currently. So actually, Andy Kitro came up with a pretty comprehensive program assessment, which I handed around to you guys, which we'll be going live with in the next couple of weeks to really just understand what is out there, what types of programs are out there, what types of events are out there for our youth. So using that information, we will be able to understand where the gaps are and, and inform a gap, a comprehensive gap analysis. So we've developed this assessment tool, and it's utilizing Survey Monkey, the county's been generous to let us use their online subscription to Survey Monkey, so that's how we be administering that survey. And then, like I said, we'll use that as a strategic, to develop our strategic development. So the next piece to this, it was really thanks to the leadership of the Greater Salisbury Committee, Mr. Jim Thomas, Mike Dunn. They had applied for a grant through the Henson Foundation to develop an application for a smartphone and tablet to help get this information, what programs and services, what events are actually in the community out to the youth. So we have some youth who are working with us to make sure that they'll actually use it, making sure that these applications are communicating with Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, to make sure that we're capturing that data and putting it in one location so they can get that information. And additionally, we're using this Toronto Youth Portal application that was developed that actually shows on a, on a map where different services and programs are, and there's searchable data and filters that they can use as well. So in your spare time, you can check out that link. It's pretty exciting to see. So we're, we're using that as a model. The next piece of this conversation is community center. One of the original conversations was, you know, do we need a community center in the city of Salisbury? There are a number of organizations and facilities that are operating as community centers currently, but based on the research that we've done, not every young person has access to a community center. So we've been going on-site visits to every community center throughout the city of Salisbury. That includes what Jermaine Michael is doing up in Doverdale, that includes the Salvation Army's, the YMCA. We are going to the Fruitland Community Center. There's a Fruitland, there's a community center down in Princeess Anne. So we have just scoured the Lower Eastern Shore and tried to get into every community center to see what's out there. My wife's center, the EPOC Dream Center, that's operating out in Hebron, has been successful as well. So we're trying to get all that information together. Actually, Jim and I are riding up to Baltimore City tomorrow, because they operate 40 community centers throughout the entire city that some are publicly funded, that they actually manage, and then in partnership with private organizations manage them as well. Last week, Under Armour announced the opening of their Under Armour House at Fayette, so we're going to be stopping by there as well. They have a giant fieldhouse and music studios and classrooms. So Jake, I don't know if you've got any connections with Kevin Plink, but it'd be great to get, you know, $5 million to make that happen down here. So we're, we're excited about what can come from that, and we'll use all that information, synthesize it, and then develop a formal recommendation that we'll present to the mayor and city council in the coming months. Other initiatives, our Mental and Emotional Wellness Subcommittee, headed by Dr. Sam Scott and actually her husband, Andy Kitro, developed this idea of United SBY, which is a robust core of positive role models, community volunteers that are, that are trained, that know how to interact with youth, that are positive role models, that are at various events around the community. Really, that stemmed from an interaction that Mark Thompson had had at the mall some time ago, and there was a post to that and an overwhelming response. I think there was over 1,500 chairs or something. So really, just making sure that we've got community leaders who know how to engage with youth in a positive way throughout the community. So that's something that, that group is working on. We also were excited to welcome Dr. Julio Berman, who's the director of Adult-Based Education at Warwick Community College, who just moved here from Phoenix, Arizona. He launched a GED to Workforce Development Training Program for delinquent youth who are actually incarcerated. So he has that template, that model. He gave us a presentation last week, and we're excited to hopefully make something like that happen as well. That'll probably be in one of our recommendations that we move forward as well. Thanks to Theo Williams, we've got, we've become plugged in with the immigrant, immigrant community as well. We met with the Haitian community leaders last week to talk about their idea, their vision for a multicultural community center, which was not originally a part of this conversation, but we're excited about their vision and being able to partner with them. And then last is the homeless youth partnerships. I attended a local COC meeting with Theo Williams and Greta Roland, who manages our homeless initiatives here on the Lower Shore, and was mortified to learn that there's really no place on the Lower Eastern Shore for unaccompanied youth to go. There used to be a place in Worcester County that they would go to, but apparently, they lost grant funding. It was federal, it was a federal grant that they managed. So there's really no place. There's no drop-in center, there's no reporting, there's no place for, for homeless youth to go. So that's something that we're going to address as well. Again, Baltimore City has a model that we're going to look at, so hopefully, we'll have more information to move forward for you guys as well. So that's it. Questions, comments? No?
All I have to say, all I have to say is that from June to now, and with no recruiting, to go from 20-something to 80, to look at the programs and the subcommittees that are working, the work that's been done already, I'm looking forward to the payback, and I think that we're going to see it, because when you have this many people that are committed and pulling the rope in the same direction, you can almost guarantee success.
Yeah.
So thank you for all you've done. Thanks to Greater Salisbury Committee.
Yeah.
Thanks to the youth. Thanks to the citizens of Salisbury, because we always said our biggest asset is the people.
Yeah.
And I think that we can all agree on that. So thank you, Robbie, for your leadership.
Thank you for your support.
And for your committee's work.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have a proclamation.
Mr. President, I do. Mr. President, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, can I do something real quick? There are a lot of members, or there are members of the Youth Civics Council here. Can, can I ask you all to stand up so we can acknowledge you? I'm sorry, Youth Development Advisory Committee and Youth Civics Council, stay standing, and the Youth Development Advisory Committee. I see some of you in the hall. Mr. Mitchell? Thank you, thank you for your service. Thank you to each of you for what you're doing for our young people. We appreciate it as a part of this organization and through each of your own organizations, so we're grateful to you. So the example that, that you are setting for our young people and the work that you're doing is incredible, and the fact that, and I know it's a bit unorthodox, there are 23 appointed individuals, members of the committee, but you can't keep people out of this room. I, I think all the credit goes to the, the leadership of the committee. So thank you, Jim, and, and thank you, Robbie. We appreciate you. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you for what you all are doing, and Mike, we're grateful to you. And to, to the example that each of you, members of the Youth Civics Council, are setting for your peers, it's incredible. And there's another group that we want to honor tonight for what they have done for our community, a group of, of young people. And I'm going to read a proclamation, then I'm going to bring you all up here, and I'm going to bring our friends from the zoo up here in just a minute, but I'd like to read this first. So Salisbury University's Kappa Sigma fraternity has donated volunteer hours to Salisbury University on more than one occasion, and most recently, they did so on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016, to assist with cleanup after what you all remember was a significant storm event. This storm event flooded the zoo, it flooded other areas of the city and neighboring communities, and it did a lot of damage. The Kappa Sigma fraternity's volunteer coordinator, Dustin Lovely, assembled a group of volunteers who raked, who swept, who shoveled public pathways throughout the zoo to remove debris left by storm waters, replaced zoo walkways that had been eroded by floodwaters, replaced gravel and mulch as needed, and cleared zoo fences covered in storm debris, and removed portions of downed trees and limbs blocking zoo walkways. Kappa Sigma fraternity volunteers recovered landscaping timbers and structures washed away by floodwaters. They rebuilt portions of zoo landscaped areas and replaced materials damaged or moved by the storm. And Kappa Sigma volunteers had previously helped the zoo. This is a long-term commitment relationship. They had previously moved and erected structural elements, and you all can see this work, it's underway, that supported the zoo's new Kukabura exhibit. I think I said that right. Did I say that right? Okay, Mary, yeah. All right. Ralph, nodding. The new Australian Bird Avary, and expanded the Wallaby Yard. And the city of Salisbury wants to acknowledge tonight the contributions that these young people have given to their community, in some cases, their adopted community, if they weren't from Salisbury originally, while attending Salisbury University, by giving time to projects that benefit all visitors and all residents of the Salisbury community and visitors to the Salisbury Zoo. And so now, therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 26th, or excuse me, November 28th, as Kappa Sigma Fraternity Day in Salisbury. And we want to recognize and share our gratitude for the volunteer hours donated by this organization, and urge all citizens to acknowledge Salisbury University's Kappa Sigma fraternity as a true friend of the Salisbury Zoo and a friend of Salisbury indeed. Gentlemen, thank you. If I could, if I could ask all of the representatives from Kappa Sigma fraternity, as well as Ralph Bylin, Director of the Zoo, and Mary Seaman, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, and anybody else from the zoo you've got with you, if you could all come up so we can give you this proclamation, so we can get some pictures, and so we can give you an opportunity to share your experiences.
Dustin Lovely, how are you? Thank you. Thank you for what you've done. We appreciate it for all you've done. How are you? How are you? Yeah, thank you, thank you. Absolutely, absolutely. Can we, can we maybe get a picture, get everybody behind the camera?
We're going to do it again.
How's it go?
Come squish.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We can now.
Of course, absolutely. So let's get, let's maybe get, can you give them the proclamation?
Where are you going to go? Get back there.
So I have one other presentation.
One more.
Before I make my other presentations, I do want to acknowledge in the room, we do have, well, just outside of the room, we do have our delegate, Carl Anderton, here. Mr. Delegate, thank you for being here. And we have County Councilman Larry Dodd. Larry, thank you for being here, Councilman. We appreciate it. So I do have one more presentation that we want to make tonight, and this is a special presentation because a lot, a lot of work went into this effort. The employees of Salisbury, as you may not be aware, the 425 employees participate in something that a lot of organizations participate in, and I think about 200 companies participated in this year, which was supporting, and you can correct me when I get the numbers wrong, over 200? Participated in. And, and the employees of the city
Okay. Well, first, I want to thank you and the council members and mayor. I remember at our CEO breakfast, walking out the door, and Mayor Day said, "I think we're going to hit $10,000. That's our goal." And I was like, "Ooh, that's pretty hefty. I think that would be like a 30% increase." But you know what? This is just an exciting day. This is the third bit of good news that you've had today, right in a row. And I think we're going to make sure, if it's not in the newspaper, that all three of these stories are on our Facebook page tonight. So, it is good news. We are getting closer and closer to our $2 million goal, which is the largest ever. And we are right now, just knowing that I hear the word "surpass," we are going to have another blessing thanks to the incredible employees. And even to, I think, the coordinator, Donna Hague. If you don't know Donna, she's incredible. I heard she would put an extra effort out there and was baking. She had people buying to bake, get her baked goods, and help them go over the top. So again, just incredible people, incredible employees, and incredible leadership. Thank you for leading the way. And I'd like to turn it over real quickly to our Wycomico County Chairman, Dana Siler from Vantage Point Solutions, and then our overall campaign chairman, who has the full responsibility of raising $2 million in the four counties. That's the insurance markets, Jim Hartstein. So Dana.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board at the United Way. We look at ourselves as being the trustee of the money that's provided. So, we want to make sure that the employees of Salisbury, the City of Salisbury, that the dedication and the commitment that they make to helping support the area is used in the best way possible. So again, we thank you. I thank you because every dollar that everyone else gives helps my checkbook to raise that $2 million, because, you know, Kathleen won't tell you publicly, but, you know, we're sort of on the hook to make sure we get there. So, anyway, thank you very much. And Jim, you have anything?
Yeah, agreed. And Jake, your efforts with the video that you sent out to city employees were fantastic. Thank you very much. And council members, thank you very much for your generous gifts. I do mean to go out to me. Want to thank you on behalf of the board, but also on the thousands of our neighbors, friends, family who can't thank you, who are the recipients of the programs that we're funding with the United Way. So, thank you again, and made my job a little bit easier. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So, let me just say again, Kathleen, Dana, Jim, thank you for all you do for our community. Thank you for what the United Way does. We appreciate it. And, you know, I will tell you that Donna Hague worked her tail off. So, she makes delicious, delicious, well, let's see, what did she cook? She made the brownies. She made the oatmeal cookies. She made the...
That chocolate thing.
That chocolate thing. Yes, that was amazing. So, next year, everybody get on the team to compete for, on a team, to compete for Donna's cooking. So, on behalf of the employees of the City of Salisbury and the elected officials of Salisbury who each contributed to this campaign, we want to present this check for $10,525. It's a better goal. It was more than a 30% increase over last year's progress, right? Let's get everybody to stand, maybe, or how you want to do this? I don't know.
Just like everyone else.
Why change it?
We could have just stayed there.
I'm going to get proud.
And biceps.
I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Check it out, United Way Facebook tonight.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know. We have to get into the real business now that may not be as exciting or great as what the thing we've just gone through. This is a good time. This is really good. Thank you, everyone. I will now entertain a motion to adopt a legislative agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Mr. President, should we ask everyone to stay and read the 136 pages and then have to sit back down?
It's only 136.
Where are you going?
I think the fire alarm went off.
Your fun part has just begun.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.
The lunch bell. You sent them away.
Bottleneck.
I will wait.
They're trying so hard to get out of the room.
I would suggest that you sit in, Russell.
I do.
Do it at the end.
Do it at the end.
They may have exciting meetings.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda for this evening, we have the November 7th work session minutes, November 14th regular meeting minutes, Resolution Number 2699 approving the appointment of Brian Soper to the Board of Zoning Appeals for term ending November 2019, Resolution Number 2700 approving the appointment of Sean Jester to the Board of Zoning Appeals for term ending November 2019, Resolution Number 2701 approving the appointment of Roger Mizzullo to the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee for term ending November 2019, Resolution Number 2702 accepting funds awarded through a grant from the Maryland Historical Trust for the updating expansion of the Salisbury Historic District Design Guidelines. We have four manufacturing exemption requests for Jubilant, Cadista Pharmaceuticals, Inc., K&amp;L Microwave, Inc., RealCom Technologies, Inc., and Viscom Air Corporation, Inc. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
And, Mr. President, can we recognize the individuals that were nominated?
Yes, I was about to do that. If the following gentlemen are still, are here, please stand. Brian Soper, Sean Jester, and Roger Mizzullo. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks very much. I'll now entertain a motion to award the bids.
So moved.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. On the consent agenda for this evening, we have the November 7th work session minutes, November 14th regular meeting minutes, Resolution Number 2699 approving the appointment of Brian Soper to the Board of Zoning Appeals for term ending November 2019, Resolution Number 2700 approving the appointment of Sean Jester to the Board of Zoning Appeals for term ending November 2019, Resolution Number 2701 approving the appointment of Roger Mizzullo to the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee for term ending November 2019, Resolution Number 2702 accepting funds awarded through a grant from the Maryland Historical Trust for the updating expansion of the Salisbury Historic District Design Guidelines. We have four manufacturing exemption requests for Jubilant, Cadista Pharmaceuticals, Inc., K&amp;L Microwave, Inc., RealCom Technologies, Inc., and Viscom Air Corporation, Inc. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
And, Mr. President, can we recognize the individuals that were nominated?
Yes, I was about to do that. If the following gentlemen are still, are here, please stand. Brian Soper, Sean Jester, and Roger Mizzullo. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks very much. I'll now entertain a motion to award the bids.
So moved.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
Good evening. First item this evening is an award of bid for Contract 113-17 Fire Engines. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department received a request from the Department of, oh my, I put Public Works. It's actually the Salisbury Fire Department.
Congratulations, Mike. You've got...
Sure, they buy them, but they get them.
So the Fire Department wanted to purchase two engines through Atlantic Emergency Solutions utilizing a cooperative purchasing program, HGAC Buy. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance. It's when contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. Again, we're looking to piggyback on an HGAC Buy contract. This charter designation, therefore, allows the City of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities such as HGAC Buy. The Houston-Galveston Area Council is a unit of local government and a political subdivision of the State of Texas. All products offered through HGAC Buy have been awarded by virtue of a public competitive process. The contracts awarded by the HGAC Board are then made available to local governments nationwide through the HGAC Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program. The City of Salisbury has previously purchased items utilizing this program through the execution of an interlocal contract, which sets out the conditions, requirements, and process of the procurement. The Procurement Division has verified the contract pricing, terms, and conditions with a representative from HGAC Buy, and that's under contract number FS 12-15, and there are sufficient funds to cover this purchase in the noted account. The Procurement Department requests council's approval to award Contract 113-17 to Atlantic Emergency Solutions in the amount of $1,364,378.
Questions?
Okay. The next item is a request for Declaration of Surplus. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare 126 weapons as surplus. These weapons will either be traded for new, sold to the caring officer, or destroyed if non-serviceable. A list of weapons and the proposed disposition status is noted in the attached departmental memo. Upon declaration of surplus and approved, as approved by council, the weapons will be disposed of as noted.
Questions?
Okay. The next item is a request for Declaration of Surplus as well. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Public Works Department to declare a John Deere Gator 4x2 as surplus. This equipment was inadvertently damaged by Ullman Shooty Construction while performing duties at the wastewater treatment plant. The damage was extensive, rendering the item unusable and unsellable. In full satisfaction of this claim, the vendor will purchase a new John Deere Gator for the wastewater treatment plant. Upon declaration of surplus and as approved by council, the aforementioned equipment will be released to Atlantic Tractor for disposal.
Questions?
Okay. And the last item, and actually, that's all for what would need to be approved this evening.
Okay. So, I'll call the motion now. All those in favor of awarding the bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you.
Great. The last item, do you want me to go over the last item?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. The last item is Change Order Number 3. That's for Contract 107-15, the Wastewater Treatment Plant BNR-ENR Upgrade. Per Resolution 2506, which is specific to that contract, change orders in the amount of $50,000 to $100,000 are authorized to be approved by the mayor. Once approved, the city council shall be notified in writing within two business days following the approval of the change order. Lastly, all change orders shall be placed on the agenda of the next legislative meeting. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from Public Works on November 14th to review and process Change Order Number 3 for Contract 107-15. This change order increases the contract cost by $80,841 to address 16 miscellaneous items. The total net change to the contract is an increase of $118,379. A synopsis of the work as specified for Change Order Number 3 is included in the attached departmental memo. So Change Order Number 3 was approved on November 14th by Mayor Jacob R. Day, and notification of the approval was sent to the administrative office on November 16th, requesting that such be forwarded to the city council. The inclusion of this change order at tonight's legislative meeting is informational in nature, with no further approval required, and will serve to fulfill the requirement of public notification as defined in Resolution 2506.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Question?
I was just going to ask about the list, the list of items.
The 16?
Yeah. Just...
Okay.
When I first read it, I thought it said install new duct tape, but it says duct bang. So I was going to ask about that, and just where these items came from, which side they came from, how we came up with the cost.
Okay. Mike, can you jump in? Thank you.
As the project proceeds during construction, different items where we find what's uncovered wasn't represented in all drawings, so changes are made there. Opportunities as equipment comes in for a potential upgrade. That's an example of that terminal upgrade that was on there. Was there a specific one, Councilman Irtan, you wanted to point out?
No, because most of these, unless you work out there every day, you're not exactly sure what they are. So I was sort of relying on you to say these were acceptable, these were in the course of everyday events, that sort of thing.
Yep. Yeah, it's items that we see it's an opportunity during construction to make an adjustment and improvement in terms of what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2703.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda, Ms. Glantz.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you, as a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland conveying city-owned property on Naylor Mill Road to Wycomico County. The City of Salisbury owns Naylor Mill Road, and Wycomico County owns land on Naylor Mill Road known as the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex, which abuts the property owned by the City of Salisbury. And Wycomico County owns the property known as Scenic Drive, which abuts and provides access to property owned by the City of Salisbury. And the City of Salisbury wishes to convey a parcel of land totaling 6.23 acres to Wycomico County, and Wycomico County has agreed to give an easement to the City of Salisbury, granting access over and use of Scenic Drive. And the City of Salisbury and Wycomico County have agreed to shared maintenance and cost for Scenic Drive and possible future parking areas. And now, therefore, be resolved, the City Council of Maryland to convey onto Wycomico County said property below.
Questions?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Council President, if we could move to strike lines 20 and 21 in the resolution. It was struck from the agreement, but it is still here in this particular resolution. And I'm trying desperately to find it on my own computer, and everything has gone blank yet again. Ah, it's nice.
Any issues with that, Ms. Glantz? Okay.
Second a motion? Do you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to strike lines 20 and 21 from Resolution 2703.
We have a motion to strike and amend. Mr. Irtan made the motion. Mr. Boda seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2703, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye.
Resolution Number 2704, a resolution of the City of Salisbury authorizing a capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for a development known as Farlow Fields, an affordable housing development. Whereas, the WODA group has requested a waiver of capacity fees for its development known as Farlow Fields, which is located on Beagle and Park Drive and Old Ocean City Road, and the proposed development requires approximately 72 equivalent dwelling units of water and sewer service. And the WODA group has requested a capacity fee waiver of 72 EDUs, and the current capacity fee for 72 EDUs is 254,000... fee for 72 EDUs is $254,376. And one of the city's goals is to encourage the development of affordable housing in the City of Salisbury, and whereas the city council approved the capacity fee waiver process under Resolution Number 1211 for public-sponsored affordable housing.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2704.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Any questions?
I was just gonna ask if we could, we had this discussion in closed session, and it might be good to have it again when waiving $254,376, but it was a discussion that the state is going to make us do this anyway. And I thought maybe it was a good idea for someone who had, I think I asked that nice gentleman for a paragraph on how to explain that to people, but is there anyone at the table or administration that could go through that language just one more time for the sake of the record?
It was an open session.
I know.
It was a work session.
Yeah.
But it was. Two things were discussed that, one was that our code requires, which is the waiver of capacity fees for affordable housing developments. That was discussed. And then, I think the other was the, not that the state requires, but the state doesn't much care if we want affordable housing or not, that they will, I don't wanna say force, but they won't really consider our objections. And now, the reason being is that there were municipalities, and in fact, they're on the eastern shore, that intentionally, for what was quite plainly racist and socio and economically highly-charged reasons, tried to keep affordable housing out of their communities. They wanted to price out essentially certain people. And the state is basically saying, well, we are now taking the right for municipalities or counties to object to a proposed affordable housing development for those reasons away. And I think the only way that they did that is that they scored, they used to score very highly in municipality passing a resolution and saying, you know, yes, we want this to happen, and lower a letter from a municipal official saying, yes, we want this to happen. And now I don't think those are factored in, or they're factored in very low. So that was what we discussed previously. But yeah, I think you're right to bring it up.
Also, do we know when WODA Development and Construction Management will have something for us to look at? Will that come back into the planning commission that way?
Yeah, it hasn't come.
Hasn't come yet? Okay, thank you.
I can't speak for them, but I would guess that they would wait until whether or not they were, they received the tax credits, and if they don't, they probably won't proceed.
Any other questions about 2704? All right, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution 2704, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion now to approve Resolution Number 2705.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Boda.
Before you, as a resolution... Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Jump again. Before you, as a resolution approving the sale of property known as the Lydia Phillips property to the state of Maryland, which property has been leased to the state of Maryland for use as a parking lot at the Maryland Multi-Service Center just down the street. Whereas the City of Salisbury and the state of Maryland entered into agreement in connection with real property known as the Lydia Phillips property on or about October 31st, 1984, agreement between the City of Salisbury and the state of Maryland concerning parking for proposed Salisbury Multi-Service Center. And a second amendment to the agreement between the city and state concerning parking for the proposed Maryland Multi-Service Center in the City of Salisbury was entered into April 1st, 1987, which amended the original agreement between the parties dated October 31st, 1984, which was the first amendment amended to the amendment as dated October 13th, 1984. Jen, you're just mean. The second amendment to the agreement between the city and state dated on April 1st, 1987, expired on or about April 30th, 2014, but was renewed and kept in force through the lease extension signed by the parties. The parties last extended the lease agreement for the property on or about December 16th, 2015, and in connection with all agreements concerning the property, there was a purchase option for the state to purchase the Lydia Phillips lot from the city, and the price of $380,000 was last contained in the last amended lease extension, which imposed a purchase deadline by the state of December 31st, 2016. And the city extended for the Lydia Phillips lot to be incorporated by the reference as surplus in prior Resolution Number 267 dated on December 26th, 1984, in connection with the sale of real property where the Maryland Multi-Service Center was constructed and which required as part of its agreements between the parties for the city to acquire which, what is known as the Lydia Phillips property in order for parking to be provided for the use of the state and public at the Maryland Multi-Service Center. And the city has satisfied that the Lydia Phillips property was sufficiently identified and described in past agreements and in Resolution Number 267 that was passed by the city, and the intent was for the city to declare the Lydia Phillips lot as surplus, as it was to be part of the entire real property area sold or to be sold to the state for purposes of constructing the Maryland Multi-Service Center and attached parking lot. And the Department of Internal Service procurement concurs that the Lydia Phillips property being deemed as surplus property and being expected from this public bidding, accepted from the public bidding process and sold for the contract price negotiated by the state. And the attached contract for sale of the Lydia Phillips property and the attached deed for the property have been approved to complete the sale and transfer of the property, and that the mayor and the appropriate director of Internal Services procurement personnel are authorized to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the city to complete sale and transfer of the property.
Questions?
What?
We all blackout when we hear 1984.
Yes. Okay. Hearing no questions. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2705, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. President, if I could, yeah, I know we were just kinda hard on the state a few minutes ago, the state's processes, but the upside is, you know, it was 26 years later, we closed this deal, and, you know, thanks to honestly the governor and Department of General Services for finalizing what has been a long outstanding issue.
Never to be, never to be heard of again.
Yes, I imagine the original resolution probably had the signatures of Paul Martin and Norm Conway on it.
Yes, probably.
Yes, and written in feather quill.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, sorry.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2404.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Irtin and Ms. Jackson. Evening, Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance of the city approving a budget amendment of the FY 2017 general fund and capital project fund in order to appropriate funds for a radio communication system, whereas the City of Salisbury is informed by Motorola that parts for the existing communication system will be difficult to procure, and whereas the city has determined a new radio communication system is needed, and where the city has an opportunity to piggyback with Wycomico County on the purchase of a new system, and whereas the City of Salisbury has received a quotation from Motorola for a new radio communication system in the amount of $1,432,838.13, and whereas the City of Salisbury's projections conclude that there is more than $500,000 in budgeted salaries that will not be required due to unexpected vacancies, and whereas the City of Salisbury has determined $500,000 of the expected savings in the police department's salaries should be used to fund part of the new radio communication system, and whereas the City of Salisbury has determined an additional $425,448.13 required to fund the new radio communication system should be funded using surplus, and whereas the City of Salisbury has determined the remainder of $507,390 required to fund the new radio communication system should be funded using available bond proceeds, and whereas this ordinance will authorize the temporary use of surplus until the reallocation can be completed by bond council. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget be amended as follows. General Fund 1, decrease police department budget by $500,000. Paragraph 2, increase current year surplus 01000-469810 by $425,448.13. Increase the current year surplus 01000-469810 by $507,390. Increase the debt service and other uses by $1,432,838.13. The general capital project fund with an increased transfer in to the general fund account 98017-469313-48033 by $1,432,838.13, and increase the capital outlay radios count 98117-577031-48033 by an equivalent amount.
Is this, is this where the contract with Motorola is attached? Is this this part?
Yes.
Or is it the next one?
Um...
Or is this just the money?
This is the money.
I'll wait till I put it on.
This is the money.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll call the, call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2404, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. Mr. Tillman, you might as well stay there. I'll let Ms. Glantz jump in.
Yeah, we're jumping.
Do the resolution, and then we'll go back.
Tagging it out.
Yeah.
And I'd like to recognize, oh, recognize Alex Calderon of CTO and Richard Morris of Motorola, if there's any questions for them later. Happy to answer them.
Let me just get the motion.
Sure, sorry.
Mr. Irtin made a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Boda seconded. Thank you.
Resolution Number 2706, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of radios to be used with the radio communication system, whereas the City of Salisbury has been informed by Motorola that parts of the existing communication system will be difficult to procure, and the City of Salisbury has determined a new radio communication system is needed. And the City of Salisbury has determined that new radios are needed for utilization with the new radio communication system, and the City of Salisbury has an opportunity to piggyback with Wycomico County on the purchase of a new system and new radios. And the City of Salisbury has received a quotation from Motorola for the new radios to be utilized with the radio communication system in an amount of $1,432,838.13. Yes, that's it.
Oh, I thought there was more.
Oh, yes. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Salisbury that the mayor is authorized to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the purpose of purchasing the necessary radios, and be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to negotiate, execute, and deliver all documents on behalf of the City of Salisbury in connection with the contract with Motorola Solutions, and to take any action necessary which to consummate the transaction described herein.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mark's gonna be mentoring Julia on reading resolutions and ordinances.
He's got it.
He's got it, the speed read down.
Yeah.
Trained by the federal government, literally.
Questions? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2706, please signify by saying...
Actually, I do have a question, Mr. Heath. I was just wondering, nothing about what's here, well, actually, one question about what's here. Was the, was the contract negotiated by procurement and the police department, is that how that went?
Yeah, please come to the mics.
So the original contract was actually, the one that we are piggybacking on, was originally executed between the county and Motorola.
Okay.
We are piggybacking on that contract, so we're in the process of then writing a contract that will, where it's needed, supersede that document, so that, you know, references to the county when that's not appropriate are now references to the city and so forth, and it specifies the radios that we're purchasing for the cost that we're purchasing them at.
That leads to my other question. We had spoken about an MOU that we were going to have with the county regarding these, this system and these radios. What's the timeline on that?
We have an MOU. We are going to execute it tomorrow. Just needed to make sure that we had the funding in place before going forward with that.
Is it possible to get a copy of that MOU?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, just, I think one of the things Mayor Day has learned, a former mayor and current Councilman Irtin learned, is creative ways of finding, to do things when you have limited resources and you have multiple options and you're still like, well, we gotta find another way, and I think this was a good job of cleaning up the bonds and finding money in places that we could use it for something that literally we have to do. So, good job on that.
Mr. Heath, if we could, I just wanna, I'm not sure if I'll remember, so I'm gonna ask one of you all to remember, when we get to budget session early next year, we're gonna have to take a look at that police department number, because, you know, we can't put another $500,000 in there, you know, so that it, not that it had to be, but in this particular case, it was necessary to take it out, but we wanna make sure that that money for salaries and those positions is either the correct amount for the amount that's been there, a good estimate, but having that kind of money left over is something we're gonna need to discuss, I think.
Yeah, I think we discussed that at the, at the work session and talked about the...
That makes me to remember twice.
I think I can still do that.
Thank you.
We'll discuss that. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and we're working to address that now, so that it doesn't have to be a guessing game, because, you know, I think what Mr. Irtin's bringing up is something that has plagued us for a while, and, you know, by having a, as close as possible to a fully staffed complement of all of the sworn positions that we have available, by being as close to that number as possible, there's little guesswork in it, and you can be a lot closer. You know, as we talked about, the police department, the positions, the sworn positions take longer to fill, because, you know, if you want newly-trained officers, it takes six months through the academy, so we don't have that problem in other positions.
It also takes about a year to find somebody, background checks and...
And it takes time, right. So we're trying to fill those positions as quickly as possible, so that we don't run into, so that we can answer that question before we even get to budget session, but it's certainly one that we'll have to continue to keep on the front of our, front of our minds and the tops of our papers.
Right. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2403.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Thank you. It's an ordinance of the city approving an amendment...
We need to vote on 2706.
Did we vote, we didn't vote on that? Sorry.
No, we didn't.
All right. Somebody keeps asking questions, so...
Don't ask.
All right. All right, now we'll vote on ordinance Number 2404.
2706.
2706, I'm sorry. Resolution Number 2706. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2403.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson and Mr. Boda.
This is an ordinance of the city approving an amendment of the FY 2017 general fund budget to appropriate funding back to the downtown visitor center, whereas the city has received revenue from the sale of merchandise at the downtown visitor center, and where the city would like to reinvest these funds back to the department, and whereas the city has received $754.56 for merchandise sold during the period from October 19th, 2016 to October 13th, 2016. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Increase marketing by $754.56 account 11600-555512.
Any questions? If not, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2403, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion for approval of ordinance Number 2405.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Irtin?
This ordinance is another one of the parking ordinances with regard to, I believe this one's what, Pinehurst Elementary?
Yes.
An ordinance of the City of Salisbury to designate a restricted parking zone on portion of... of South Pinehurst Avenue between Evergreen Avenue and Mayfield Avenue, whereas the Board of Education has requested the establishment of a restricted parking zone along South Pinehurst to facilitate student drop-off and pickup, and whereas on-street vehicular parking adjacent to the school, public entrance and exit during school drop-off and pickup could create a potentially unsafe condition for vehicles in the travel lanes and exiting the school, and whereas the Public Works Department recommends restricting the timing of parking on a portion of the south side of South Pinehurst Avenue along the school property between Evergreen Avenue and Mayfield Avenue to prohibit parking Monday through Friday between eight AM and four PM. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to designate a restricted parking zone on South Pinehurst as shown on the attached Exhibit A.
Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two four zero five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number two four zero six.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
This is a restricted parking ordinance at the request of Heritage Development Homeowners Association. An ordinance to the city of Salisbury to designate a no parking zone on a portion of Fairview Lane and the intersection of Hidden Meadow Lane, whereas the Heritage Development Homeowners Association has requested the establishment of a no parking zone along Fairview Lane and the intersection of Hidden Meadow Lane to improve sight distance for pedestrians and children crossing the intersection. And whereas due to limited available on-street parking, the development vehicles frequently use this area near the intersection for parking, thereby creating sight distance restrictions for vehicles and safety concerns for pedestrians and children crossing the intersection. And whereas the Public Works Department recommends establishing a no parking zone extending from twenty feet beyond the pedestrian crossing on Hidden Meadow Lane and extending to the south side of Fairview Lane to a point fifteen feet beyond the fire hydrant and on the north side of Fairview Lane from the driveway curb line on Hidden Meadow Lane, fifty-five feet along Fairview Lane. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to designate a no parking zone on Fairview Lane and Hidden Meadow Lane intersection as shown on the attached Exhibit A.
Questions? This, go ahead.
Do you have one?
You go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, I know there's some national safety traffic, something or another that comes up with these ideas, but I was gonna ask Mr. Mols about the difference between how far it is on one side of Fairview and how short it is on the other, and whether or not that sets us up for other people who want the same thing that might not be applicable to their particular intersection. I mean, this is, this is what we do, so this is, this is incredibly important stuff for people who have got, stop their councilperson in the grocery store and go, how come my street can't have what their street has?
Yeah, we had the, the mayor and I had the opportunity to meet with the homeowners association representatives out there to hear what their concerns were. The longer section that's shown encompasses the hydrant, there's a hydrant on that side of the street, so between the separation distance for the hydrant and then the near-connection with the intersection, we just included that whole section on that, in terms of that. And the other side is just that sight distance around that intersection, as you saw in the exhibit there. That's, that's the main difference there, we have that additional area. They had a, a child got hurt crossing that section.
But if the child's coming from the other side of the street, instead of the side of the street that it was coming on, I'm just asking whether or not it would have made sense to go all the way to that little strip of, of, of land on the north side.
If, if I may, it, I think it could. My, my understanding also from the conversation with the residents was that they, they didn't mind being able to park on the street, and they wanted somewhere to park, but they didn't feel comfortable with parking on both sides. And when you look down the street from that direction, it was the, the side to the, on the left side there that created the biggest obstruction from view. I think the child came from the other direction. I don't know a hundred percent, but I think that was.
Yeah, I think my question was more, is there a set of standards that you apply, Mr. Mols, when you're standing there looking at this particular angle, this particular scope of the street?
It, a lot of it's looking at how the street's structured. It's a very narrow street, so that's one idea. If you have cars parking on the, as you look in the exhibit, let's say, the left side coming down there, it's kind of obscuring that intersection as they go around the curve, whereas when they're coming the other way, they're slowed down to take that turn on the intersection and then go up. So, there's more sight distance problems coming down the road into that intersection. So, between the hydrant, the coverage on the intersection, and the sight distance along that area was the logic between making that more extended.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two four zero six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four zero seven.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtan.
Okay. This is an ordinance that really results from the receipt of insurance checks backed by the city as a result of damage to vehicles, and it's an ordinance of the city approving a budget amendment of the FY two thousand and seventeen fire department budget to transfer insurance funds received by the city to the fire department operating budget from the general fund for revenue received from local government insurance trust for the repairs performed on AC one, engine two, and B two. Whereas AC one, engine two, and B two were damaged while performing legitimate city of Salisbury fire department duties, and whereas the fire department has paid for repairs to AC one, engine two, and B two with funds from the fire department operating budget vehicles account, and whereas the fire department's vehicles account will not have sufficient funds to comply with FY two thousand and seventeen operating budget, and whereas the city of Salisbury has received funds from the local government insurance trust for repairs to AC one, engine two, and B two, and whereas the reimbursement of insurance funds to the fire department vehicles account, two four zero three five dash five three four three oh eight, will be used to maintain vehicles while operating within the FY two thousand and seventeen operating budget. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand and seventeen budget be and is hereby amended as follows: increase in the general fund revenue insurance proceeds account oh one zero 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 dash four five six nine three five by twenty-six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and eighty-two cents, and an increase in the fire department's vehicles account, two four zero three five dash five three four three oh eight, by an equivalent amount.
Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two four zero seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two four zero eight. Mr. Boda?
Second.
Second it.
Mr. Rudisil was gonna, yeah, he was gonna. I saw him go like this, so.
You can't wait, you can't wait, you have to do it.
Mr. Rudis, seconded by Mr. Rudisil. Welcome. Go ahead.
This is a budget amendment arising from a reimbursement from an officer as a result of an agreement with the city of Salisbury to reimburse the city for training expenses. And, and he has in fact done that, and the money has to be rebudgeted. An ordinance to the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the two thousand and seventeen general fund budget to appropriate the funds returned on contract, whereas the police department requires a police officer recruit to enter into a prorated five-year employment contract prior to attending the police academy, and whereas the police officer who did not meet the conditions of the contract reimbursed the city a prorated amount of fifty-five hundred dollars, and whereas this Salisbury Police Department requests that these funds be placed in the police services training account, two one zero two one dash five 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 zero four, to offset police academy training costs. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year two thousand and seventeen general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows: with an increase in the general fund revenue oh one zero 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 dash four five six nine one one by fifty-five hundred, and an increase in the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two four zero eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Ms. Nichols, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay. Hearing none. Meeting's adjourned.
Mike, I just saw that.